Good evening, I'd like to call to order the committee the whole meeting Monday, June 17th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Please call to order.
Peters.
Here.
Holtz.
Here.
Soretta.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Keesling.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Fonte.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. First up, finance and property chairwoman, Ware.
Laura, if you want to say anything about this.
Sure. Item A and item B kind of go hand in hand. They're basically the same except for the type of levy. Last week you guys approved sending those levies off to the county auditor. I did that. They sent back the certification that one mill would generate $369,221. So that for storms there and for street each. And then this is the second piece to put levy on the ballot. This is actually the ballot language to submit to board elections.
Okay.
Okay, so for A and B, does anybody, is everyone in favor? Move to the agenda. Daryl?
It's fine, but before we do that, if you would look on page two of each of those, the legal description, as it will appear on the ballot. If you notice that we have, on the first one, we have 10 cents. And in the second one, we have 10 cents numerical. So we have consistency in either one of those. And we've got five years and five, I mean numerical five. So we just need to, one, the first one, just add those in. Okay?
And actually, I think we've been taking those out of most levy.
Whatever our preferred, in towards style is.
Okay, so we have, everyone in favor, put in next week's agenda.
Yep.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, you see?
Okay, Laura, you want to talk about that, something for funds round?
Sure. A couple of years ago, I had asked council to create the capital reserve fund, Fund 335, and we did that. And last year, we did our first transfer into that fund. This year, we'll do it again. And basically, what we do is we look at, in 2018, what did department heads not spend out of their budget lines for things like supplies, materials? And then we allow them to carry that over into the capital reserve. But it's a little savings account. And we keep track of it by individual departments. So even within the general fund, police, parks, double pool, all those things. And then in future budget years, those departments could use those funds for capital purchases. So this year, we did better than last year. Last year, we only did about, I believe it was 150,000. This year's about 335,000 that was not spent in '18 that we even saved for a rainy day for a capital purchase.
And then there were times where you said they lose those money. I can't think specifically of certain projects, like, didn't we use it with some for the generator? With some for?
Not for the generator. We had, the only piece that's been used so far is there was a piece of equipment for the street department.
Okay.
That because salt was so much more expensive this year, they didn't have a lot of extra operations money, but they could pull from that capital reserve and still be able to get that out of equipment. What was the excavator?
So understand this. Typical complaint about government is that as it nears the end of fiscal year, various departments spend everything they can with the fear that they, their budgets will be lower or disruptive. In this particular instance, what you're telling us is that our various departments have been good stewards of public treasury. And these are monies that have been unspent and held in reserve. In other words, you're being responsible.
That's right. Yeah, we don't want anybody going the last week of December buying a whole lot of stuff they don't need just to save that money.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, put that on the budget, on the agenda?
Yep.
Excuse me. Okay, done stuff?
Yep.
All right, and at this time, I need a motion to second to amend the agenda to include an item on community economic development.
I move to add item three to the agenda of your community economic development. And that item is the industrial commercial job creation incentive grant agreement.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cheryl and Keith?
Yes.
We have two firsts.
Paul?
Personal safety.
Oh, I'm sorry, geez. All right, jumped ahead of myself. That's why I'm here as well, personnel safety. Unbelievable. Okay, we have a legislation request from Director Diorio, Pat, and to, just put them with you, we have Chief Menach here.
Yeah, I want to ask Chief John Menach to come up to the podium and be able to, you know, lay out the narrative of where we are with, Dave.
Chair this.
When's last week? Camera?
The layout of the manpower with the police department, particularly as it relates to the control. And as you know, we've done some things this year with the school resource officers and how that affects us. And we've been putting together with the school and getting some additional funding in from them. But we do have some manpower requirements. So Chief, why don't you go ahead and talk about this? Because we've been working on this really since the last budget cycle on getting this piece moved forward.
What this does is just get me back to having the same number of guys on the road that I had prior to giving two of them to the school district. I shouldn't say giving to them because they're reimbursing us for time. But we had had 17 on the road, and we were authorized 18 as a maximum by ordinance. So in dedicating two of those to the school district, we did fill the 18th position, but that still left me one short, and we were not authorized to go beyond the 18. So this is authorizing us to go to 19, which is the 17 on the road that I had before plus two. And then we put a clause in there to make a contingent upon having them dedicated in reimbursement from the school district, so we don't end up with surplus people later on.
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
How does this relate to saying we have an officer that is being deployed?
It helps, because I'm not short, like I am now. But it really wouldn't, it wouldn't cover that per se, because this again is based on having funding coming in for the additional officer beyond, I think beyond 18. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. Which, we are facing that situation this fall. We have an officer in the Army Reserve that's going to be deployed for 13 months. We also have an officer that's been off on sick leave, and we have an officer that just had shoulder surgery, which these things do happen. You have people get injured, you have people get ill, you have retirements, you know, and sometimes you have a couple of months it might take, or several months to get a position filled, or somebody trained. And that's just part of our, you know, our daily business, and we've been through that numerous times in the past. But having these two dedicated to the school district on top of that other business going on can really put us in a short situation on a pretty regular basis. I try not to, like, catch up all the time.
And Chief, if you could just clarify, so typically in the city, we have like just over five square miles. And so we'll have, on any given shift, the total number of officer patrol.
There could be, including the shift sergeant, there should be a minimum of four for days and afternoons, nights, and maybe down to three. Typically, there would be four on nights, and days and afternoons can range from four, five, or six officers on a monthly rotation.
So that's, that's one of the advantages we have in North Canton, because we have a smaller geographic area to patrol, and, and that's why we get excellent coverage with the fortified police officers. And with, and with the two police officers that are now covering the schools, the schools are paying for large, for all the portions that are being utilized at the school, was about 70%?
Seventy-five, it's nine months in a year versus in a check.
So the school is paying for those police officers. And then in, in the summertime, you have them to utilize for patrol?
To a certain degree, but as a school, and a lot of people don't realize the investment that we have in that school safety program. In the summer, those guys have a big conference that they go to for the school resource program. We actually have additional officers beyond those two that are, that go to building assessment training. They learn to teach Alice drills to the school staff. And then we generally discourage them from taking vacation for the school year as well. So that's when they're taking their time off, is during the summer. So it's not like it's a bunch of extra people, because there is a lot of extra responsibilities along that.
And also too, this is a part of the plan, because you've had, you know, redeveloping the security plan for the schools, and, and that's in process, coming in the final stages too. So, and we've been working on that, you've been working on that for the past?
Pretty much, years of this school year, to get their assessments done, and build your personnel underneath that.
So we'll be ready to go, should be ready to go by the next, school, school year.
Just a point of clarification, the chief had mentioned that 18 officers, and the number in the ordinance is still 18. But if you look at the paragraph just above the chart, it says that the department can't exceed that number unless additional budget dispositions receive funding from outside sources by written agreement. And that's something that the chief and I kind of went back and forth on and worked on together, because, you know, I didn't want, not the key to do this, but I didn't want a future chief to just run wild and have a blank check of officers. So it has to have outside funding via written agreement, and then those positions being budgeted as well. Is that how you see it? Thank you.
Thank you, John. If you don't mind me asking, what would happen, I don't know what the contract is, if the school decided to get their own two officers then, at that point? And give it back from a different source?
Well, that was something that I spent some time on upfront. We actually got them into different length agreements, which I felt covered us pretty well. I believe the first one was a three-year, and the second one is a five. So that put us out beyond several anticipated retirements. So, and they have to give us the year's notice too. So we'd be in a good position if they do decide to do something different. We'll have a take, and see anyway, we won't have to worry about any layoffs or anything like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Take, Chief, can you mention it? That's okay. And everyone in favor, moving that forward?
Yes.
Okay. Now, next up, we have community economic development, Chairwoman.
Yes, we had a study announcement this afternoon. We landed people extorted into our facility across the street. We have, they assigned a five-year lease with IRG, and we are, we have created this job creation incentive grant agreement with them, giving them 50% of their income tax back over the next five years, 50% each year over the next five years. So we'll collect all of the income tax and give them back 50% at the end of each year. Anything else to add, Pat?
The standard clauses in there concerning if they don't meet the incentive agreement, what happens? And, you know, this isn't the council's, you know, first endeavor issue. They did this with Act of Children, so a lot of the language is, is very similar. It's just been modified to accommodate them a little bit more specifically. Laura, I'm sure I could tell you that, you know, by the time they pay the income tax and goes to breed and comes back to here, and it's never, you know, it's 18 months into the future before, you know, maybe that's eligible to be paid to them. On the split side, the 50% to the company, and then the other 50%, 45% would be for the city, 5% to the CIC.
So you're going to say, send some money back, recharge from the CIC? This is the first time we've really done that with putting our own money to. Pat, was this the one where you talked about helping them with moving expenses before too, and kind of being creative with any of that?
This, I think that, that isn't what you're looking at, but that real creative part came out of the CIC.
Okay.
Yeah, so this part is really the, what you see from, you know, most municipalities trying to board jobs to their cities is offering some type of income tax incentive.
Right. Okay. Okay, okay, we're probably, you did it tonight, correct?
No.
No, it is next week. Okay, good.
Is, is anybody opposed to putting a urgency in there? Going to do one reading next week.
Is everybody going to be here? Okay. Put it, put it, convert it.
Good job, good job, Beth.
I was just going to add that the incentive package is not, or, you're referring, the incentive package nicely corresponds to the CIC incentive offered to minors controlled power, total all costs. And as we know, that new project produced a nice ROI, and saw subschool job gain long-term, the long-term presence. So I think this lays the foundation for it against that outline.
Now, one of the greatest incentives that we have is to get people to.
Excellent.
The more people were there, the more, I think you mentioned that, Dave mentioned that, we were talking in the back of the room, the more people we can get down here, the more businesses will reach that end. Maybe across the street there will start seeing that there is an area that they need to work on to make that area more presentable for all the people coming into town. So I'm encouraged by that.
Pat? So you're saying 215 on the jobs, and what do you think it'll project? So it's performance-based, like they can't get 215 jobs? Or if they get 250 jobs, what's the incentive?
You know, we're, we're, you're going to be looking at the payroll. So it's 8.4 million, just under 8.4 million, that they need to hit to. Whether they do that with, you know, 215, or 220, or 210, you know, whatever it is, they got to hit that 8.4 million. And then, as we've done before, if, if you don't hit it, if you miss it by a mile, like, you only get 50% of that number, you're going to miss out on your incentive. But if you get 75% of that threshold, you're still eligible. You may not receive it, but you're eligible to get it. In future years, if your payroll exceeds the 8.4 million, say it's 9.4 million, then we would allow you to apply excess payroll from, say, 2021 back to 2020 if you missed it in 2020. So, how does this also?
Performance. Performance-based.
It's definitely performance-based. They have to hit it, otherwise they don't get anything.
And the other point too is that we're collecting the income tax. So it's not like we're advancing an incentive to them through this income tax. We collect it, and based on the amount that we collect, and based on their performance, then we'll re, we will issue a, you know, a grant back to them. So in that respect, we're making, you know, we're ensuring compliance. And then the same with the CIC, Community Improvement Corporation, which we had approved out earlier today, it's the same thing. That we're reimbursing for the permits and the plans examination of $200,000. But in the event that they were to, and that's something that is done more upfront, but if they were, you know, the lease is five years, so let's say that they, if they left them in the first year, it's, they have to pay back.
100%.
100%. Second year, it's 75%. Third year, 50%. Fourth year.
25.
So 25, so, you know, really, the, the agreement covers, covers the city.
Okay, before we adjourn out of this committee meeting, I will ask you maybe regarding the upcoming meeting schedule. Just a reminder, regular council meeting next Monday, the 24th, committee on the 1st of July. We need to schedule a special council, or have we already scheduled that, Laura?
No, we need to schedule that tonight.
We have not.
With the topics that it's not covered.
Yeah, yeah, the capital reserve transfer and police authorized manpower. So, but at this time, I want to take a motion to second to schedule a special council meeting July 1st for second reading of the capital reserve transfer to police authorized manpower. So, on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That will follow, okay. On the 8th, will be our last regular council meeting before. For.
We're not doing the press release.
Right, yeah. Okay. concludes this agenda. I entertain a motion to second to adjourn out of this meeting.
Sub move.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Now, I'd like to call to order the special council meeting Monday, June 17th, 7:20 PM. Laura, would you please call to order?
Peters.
Here.
Holtz.
Here.
Soretta.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Keesling.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Fonte.
Here.
Southern person.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address. For the record, just a friendly reminder, five minute time limit, and any special council meeting, if the comments could be specific to the items on the agenda.
Chicago 1307, Prairie Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. Given that you had just discussed the devote grant, I would think that would open the door for comments on that.
We'll have an opportunity to comment next week at a regular council meeting. We'll be voting on it first week. You can make comments for that next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to discuss items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing that, we will move on to, put in some 28 motion. So, hold on, do I have to amend this first, Laura, or, Tim?
I have a motion to read it first. Would you like to read it first?
Okay, all right. Motion to second read by title, only third reading, ordinance number 28-19.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton bond order control approval to enter into a project development agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated to develop facility improvement measures, the copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein, and declaring this meeting to be raised. Thank you.
Chairwoman, Ware.
So we've talked about this a number of times, and we've had really good conversations, and a lot of questions, and we've had Mark, the law facility come up, and we've had an independent group look at it, CT, and, and now, I think, I think, and last week, they kind of reversed their scope of it. And so we have that in front of us. And I think what was really nice is when the engineer presented last year, gave the overall scope of what we want to do. We know water is important to our city, and we want to make sure that we, we keep it that way, and are able to use it the way that we want to use it. So I'd like to move it forward, I'd like to vote on it tonight, and then if you have any other questions or thoughts. I think the thing maybe we're missing is, we're really just passing it over to board control, just like we've done for other projects. We're not talking about how many sledges or presses or looms we need. We're not talking about the cost at this point, or how we're financing it. We're just moving it over to say, to, to the board control to say, are we going to move on this, and then how, what tweaks could they move, make to it?
Well, I'm encouraged that, I'm looking at, under scope of services, C, that's just us, the customer, and our agent for project funding. I mean, that's going to be through our engineer, or through the process.
And that's one of the reasons I think we need to move it forward with some of those grants, and maybe, Rob, you could comment on that, but there's certainly, there's a certain timeframe of when possibly we could get a grant, and Pat, grant?
Grant.
Grant.
Grant could get a grant.
Yeah, our first major grant application deadlines to the Public Works Commission District 19 will just start counting, and they need their applications by Friday, September 13th. So if you choose to move forward tonight, you know, we do have time, and talking with Vince and the folks at the public control, to have the, the set of plans, may not be exactly what we built, but something that shows that we're looking to move it forward with the project. Basically, one of the scoring criteria is readiness, and we gauge that by monies you spend to come up with a set of plans, so it gives us a stronger application to throw competition.
Do you feel like it's a good chance that we would get monies for it, or?
I think it would score well, I guess you put it that way. I mean, it's, it's so competitive.
Yeah.
And one of the things we could look at, is if we start to see the cost, is there's also a loan component, 0% interest loan for 20 years. And if you ask for like a grant slash loan combination, that really helps you, was your point, so I mean, something we wish to consider. Once we have an, an actual design, you can cost.
Right. I like 0%. Pat, do you want to say anything else? I know that you talked to Justin this morning, and.
You'd like to read it first.
Okay, all right. Motion of second read by title only, third reading, ordinance number twenty-eight dash nineteen.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton bond order control approval to enter into a project development agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated to develop facility improvement measures, the copy of which is attached here too, incorporated herein, and declaring the same to the ingredients.
Thank you. Chairwoman.
So we've talked about this a number of times, and we've had really good conversations and a lot of questions, and Mark, the water facility come up, and we've had an independent group look at it, C T, and now, I think, I think, and last week, they kind of revised their scope of it, and so we have that in front of us. And I think what was really nice is when the engineer presented us, you know, the overall scope of what we want to do. We know water's important to our city, and we want to make sure that we, we keep it that way, and are able to use it the way that we want to use it. So I'd like to move it forward, I'd like to vote on it tonight, and then if you have any other questions or thoughts. I think the thing that we've been missing is, we're really just passing it over to Board of Control, just like we've done for other projects. We're not talking about how many sledges, suppresses, or lagoons we need, we're not talking about the cost at this point, or how we're financing it, we're just moving it over to say, to the Board of Control to say, are we going to move on this, and then how, what tweaks could we maybe make to it?
Well, I'm encouraged that, I'm looking at, under scope of services C, that's just us, the customer, and our agency, project funding, I'm assuming that's going to be through our engineer, or through the process.
And that's one of the reasons I think we need to move it forward, some of those grants, and maybe, Rob, you could comment on that, but there's certainly, there's a certain timeframe of when possibly you could get a grant and a path, correct? A...
Grant.
Grant.
Grant, we could get a grant.
Yeah, our first major grant application deadlines to the Public Works Commission, District Nineteen, will just start counting, and they need their applications by Friday, September thirteenth. So if you choose to move forward tonight, you know, we do have time, in talking events and folks that are not in control, to have the set of plans, may not be exactly what we build, but something that shows that we're looking to move forward with the project. Basically, one of the scoring criteria is readiness, and we gauge that by monies you spend to come up with a set of plans, so it gives us a stronger application to our competition.
Do you feel like to get a chance that we would get monies for it, or...
I think it would score well, I guess you could put it that way. I mean, it's so competitive, and one of the things we could look at, is we start to see the costs, is there's also a loan component, zero percent interest loan, twenty years, and if you ask for a grant slash loan combination, that really helps you, was your point, so I mean, something we wish to consider. Once we have an actual design, you know, costs...
Right. I like zero percent. Pat, do you want to say anything else? I know that you talked to Justin this morning, and...
Yeah, thank you, just, again, just remind, you know, council where you're at. This is very similar to what you've done with the generator project. You're just authorizing, you know, us to the Board of Control to get this feasibility assessment done. Once we get, you know, all the items addressed that we feel need to be done, this feasibility assessment, bring it back to council. And say, okay, like we did with the generator, went out and talked to some experts, felt, you know, with what we knew, with Mark, drawing a parallel with what Light Hammer knew, maybe we better get somebody in there, we're a little bit out in our league. So we get, in this case, Johnson Controls with the other group that was training, and they put it together and looked at it all different ways to Sunday, came up with the bid documents, you know, recommendations on when it went out to bid, when it came back to bid, who we should go with, all that kind of stuff. And then we still brought it back to council and said, okay, this is what we think it's going to be, and we bid it out. When we initially thought we were going out, it was three hundred and fifty thousand for the generator, but when we actually bid it, it was two fifty, and then we were able to make a decision on, you know, how to pay for it then. I think you need to get that information first, so that you have an understanding of what it is that you're doing, but you all get a chance to vote on it again.
Pat? That's, I'm interested in the zero interest loans, you know, and grants and so forth, but the other thing I was thinking about is, what's his name, C T, Mr. McNutt, Bob McNutt, remember when he gave us, he's known with us, what, twenty-five plus years? And when you read his conclusion, he says that, he's not saying no, he just says, use caution. So here's a question I have. I'm good with all what we just talked about, of course, financing was my big thing, but do you think we could, by chance, and I'm not sure legally how to do this, if we can do this, but I just want to throw this out, is there a way to make it and exhibit his findings, so that when the Board of Control, you know, does their research, they kind of take that into consideration? Because Johnson Controls, you know, they're running with it, but C T was with us twenty-five, thirty years, and, you know, they know the ins and outs more than anybody, and if he says use caution, is there a way we could just sort of blend them together? I don't know if we can do that legally, so that we can move forward with this, is that possible?
Yeah, I would, you know, I'm not the, I'm not the law director, and that's probably a good question that he's going to answer, and we'll give him some time to think about it while I babble on, but I think if we could do that, to that extent, it at least gives some direction to the Board of Control, when they're going to talk with the company about the specifics of this feasibility assessment, that we're making sure that we can address all the different issues that, you know, Mr. McNutt had brought up in his correspondence. And keep in mind, you know, that this is kind of playing in C T's wheelhouse, they're competitors, so they would like to get the job too, but to that extent, he still has a fiduciary responsibility to the city in pointing out these various areas that they would like to get answers to, and I think we intend to do that in the Board of Control. But if you wish to include that at this time, as part of it, as an exhibit, that's fine, certainly would, we would not be opposed to that.
Well, four members from the Board of Control outside of here, right? So you all know...
There's four members of the Board of Control.
You all know that it's us.
Yeah.
Johnson Controls has a copy of that, I'm afraid, and I believe that it has been pressed on Johnson Controls, and its feasibility study, it should address each and every point raised by C T consultants.
I mean, I believe that since they're responsible for all where we've been so far, I mean, even though they are a competitor, I think they need to be at least looked at, make sure we uncover every rock, and look at every angle to make sure that we're good.
I would imagine that...
I think that's their plan.
C T, yes, C T will have the...
Is it the same, or are we just doing good faith here?
Well, I got a couple of points here, I want to go on record because I've been very critical of this whole thing, and I still have some issues. The three points I want to make, when you, when you take us to the Board of Control part, number one, this whole process at the very beginning, and I don't know who or what political process decided, first of all, that Johnson Control was the only one that we were going to use, that's number one, because just recently, our schools went through the same process, and they invited other bidders in, and they bought the bidder that they felt was the best, it would work. And it was the same process, they didn't want to finance because they could afford it, and they didn't want to, they didn't want to finance anything that they could do this with, and they're doing the same thing with electrical bulbs, and they're putting windows in, and it's a very high thing, and they stated that very strongly, that they didn't think that they needed to finance something, they could pay for. Secondly, every common sense business person would not go with someone to tell you what you need to do, and then the same people are going to finance your project, that just doesn't make any sense to me. So the same people that want to finance our project are going to tell us what we need done with a, with some consultant. To me, that doesn't make good business sense at all either. So again, that's, and I think we owe it to our community that we should be going out to the, to multiple bidders, to get the lowest, best price, so what was best for the community. So that's two reasons why I've been very critical of this whole thing. The last one, Pat, you sent out the letter, too, came from Bob McNutt, and Bob McNutt, who has been our consultant now for how many years? He created the whole water district and everything. All right, so he states here, now quote, "Expansion of existing lagoons may be the least expensive approach. Plate and frame sludge press method is very capital intensive, requires special staff and high energy costs, so that's more cost to us. Therefore, we would disagree with mechanical dewatering plate and frame, which is the sludge. In this conclusion, as Don mentioned, we do not recommend the city proceed with Johnson Control and Design Sludge Management and Unit Process. Instead, we recommend the city proceed with Sludge Management Studies." Now, there's a guy, why do we need to go pay for a consultant? We just have a consultant here, and he's been the top consultant in our town for some time, give us all the information here, and he's the closest to it that I think we know. So that's one of the two or three reasons why I'm very critical of this whole process and how this thing has gone down, and I don't think it represents what probably normal business that we usually do. So with that, that's why I would have been voting no, and will continue to vote no for the way this has been put out to us, and the whole process that has gone through. So that's all I'm going to say about that.
Well, to address those three, as I made, I'm not sure where the information came from, that Johnson Controls was providing financing, that has never been the case.
Well, we still have the thing in here, it says they arranged a project funding.
That's what we're speaking with directly now, is going to provide the documents so that the, we can go to OPWC, or we may end up going through, Laura, and if, you know, getting a bid, a bond, or whatever it is, but it wasn't going to involve Johnson Controls, so I'm not sure where that came from, but it's very good that you asked the question, and I appreciate that you did. I have no problem with any member of council addressing it, and I prefer that I get more of that, quite honestly.
So, Pat, Justin had told me the same thing, they just tell them the system, so they'll give you the documents, the drawings, but they've never provided the financing.
And as far as bidding, we agree, we wanted to go out to bid, but we, this is, we have to go through some process to get it out to bid, somebody has to engineer it, somebody has to study whether or not it can even go out to bid. Whatever the processes that we're doing, if it's building more of the sludge lagoons, if that's the ultimate determination, that has to go out to bid too. Somebody has to do that, and we need an engineering firm, consultant, whatever you want to call them, to put that together, because that's something that's beyond our ability. And as far as, you know, Mr. McNutt's letter, that I do say, and continue to say, that is something that I reached out to them and asked for that, because as I felt the last meeting of the council where we discussed this, that there was still, you know, sufficient confusion, that I wanted to try to get a little bit more clarity. I think it provides some clarity, it provided definite clarity on the scope of the project, I mean, we need a lot of information to figure out which direction to go, but ultimately, it's, you know, we have to start the journey somewhere, generally that starts with having somebody put together it, analyze it, and see if it is a viable product.
I mean, I guess I just feel like we've used consultants for other things, we've used it for Fairways, our viewpoint, we've used it for field press, we've used it for our technology, we've used it for, I mean, a lot, because we don't have the expertise, so I feel like that's just what we're doing, and we're moving it to the Board of Control to get it started. When he said we needed a feasibility study, they were going to do that, it wasn't some random plan that they just came up with. I mean, Johnson Controls has never moved forward without a feasibility study, that was just the next step, and that's where we're paving it, is the next step, to see what our options are.
So since we're not experts on feasibility studies and all these kinds of things, that's why we're asking some of these questions that might seem mundane, but, so Johnson Controls, you know what my situation is, so it's financing.
Yes.
Really? Really?
Really.
That's on record, really? So anyhow, with C T putting their, you know, recommendations in, I think the two of them are going to be the most accurate picture, honestly. And so it's just a matter of, can we somehow blend that into the Board of Control to make sure that's getting looked at, not just talked about, but I mean, is it, how would I do it, Pat, so that we can make sure we uncover every rock, you know, with that C T McNutt report? It's a memorandum dated six seven.
You just asked him for a feasibility study, and that's what they're going to do.
But this is two consultants talking two different terms, you know, one said they shouldn't go ahead with it, and one said...
He said, don't go ahead with it until the feasibility study is done, that's very good.
Okay, so we're crystal clear, feasibility, no matter who goes, it's going to get done.
Yeah, and, you know, ultimately, when, whatever the decision is as far as, whatever the recommendation is from the consultant as to what to do, we'll come back to City Council for further clarification, if that's the direction we want to go, and ultimately, we will have the water consultant sign off on that.
Which is McNutt?
Almost like a second opinion.
Okay, fair enough, I think so.
Grant timing. First of all, I don't know if we have six votes up there, and Rob mentioned with the timing, you know, you want to be, you want to be ready, so if you want to be...
We don't have to know these, that's what we need.
Just a quick word. If you do not believe, if you lack six votes, you should read this, adopt it for a third time, and do not move to suspend the rules. Failure on suspension rules is a defeat.
Okay, I think we're good with that.
Yeah, the original that you've given two reads to has emergency language in it.
That is correct, but you don't have to, you don't have to vote to suspend the rules on this.
On the third reading?
Yes.
In other words, you can leave the emergency language in it, but not pass it on emergency in writing.
That's correct.
But the rule says in it, if you attempt to pass it on emergency, and that fails, that kills it, it's discovered.
This is just moving to the Board of Control, just take the set, just like the generator, just to move it.
I was a no vote until if you assure me that you're going to make that effort for the grant and the zero loans, and we get McNutt's letter into the Board of Control, so that that's looked at, I would be favorable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll call a roll. What you're looking for is a motion in to adopt the third reading of ordinance number twenty-eight dash two nineteen, sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Member Soretta, nay, six one, pass. Okay.
Yeah. We've got six.
Yeah, a motion, second, suspend the rules, council, the three readings, ordinance number twenty-eight dash nineteen.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Member Soretta, six one, and a motion, a second, to adopt under suspension of the rules.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion, member Soretta, nay, six one. Okay, thank you. Moving on, motion in a second to read by title, and third reading, ordinance number twenty-nine dash nineteen. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the supplemental incorporation of funds of the city of North Canton to be appropriated from the unappropriated resources of the general fund, the general government professional services account, an amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, and the unappropriated resources of the water fund, the water administration professional services account, an amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, for the cost of a closed project development agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Okay, so we've talked about this, and this just really goes along, yes. Laura, did you hear it? Yes.
If you look in your packet, there's a version that has strike throughs in it to remove the general fund portion, but you guys have not voted to amend it at past meetings, so if you wanted to amend tonight, remove that, I kind of gave you a draft of it.
I see.
So do you mean, do you want a motion to amend?
Yeah.
To remove twenty-nine eight sixty dollars?
I'll send that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is amended now?
Okay.
Any further questions, though? No one? Okay.
Motion to adopt the third reading of ordinance number twenty-nine dash two nineteen, as amended, two zero nineteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Member Soretta, nay, six one. Okay, thank you. Motion, a second to read by title only, second reading, ordinance number forty-three dash nineteen.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance amending ordinance number fifty dash zero three, zoning ordinance to the city of North Canton to change shirt parcels on Portrait Avenue Northeast, Power Street Northeast, and Woodbury Street Northeast, as recommended by the planning commission, to a mixed use overlay and residential to family, where necessary, to provide relief to the residents and businesses therein, and break the zoning district's map and pertinent parts that are in line with the current uses, together with providing opportunities for future residents and businesses, as illustrated below in the zoning district's map attached here too, incorporated herein.
Thank you, Chairwoman Keithley.
Just what you said. And you said it so, we had a discussion, we've seen the maps, any questions? I motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, that concludes this agenda, your motion is adjourned.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.